...in the slide. We will also be monitoring social media and you can send your questions to hashtag CAC Town Hall. Our host for today's event is the Deputy to the Commanding General for the Combined Arms Center and Fort Leavenworth, Mr. Kirby Brown. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Brown.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the warm welcome. So we have a couple three purposes today. The first purpose, which I want to do, is thank the entire CAC and our community here for an absolutely amazing last year. The productivity, the impact that we've had on the Army, and some of the things I'll talk about today has been tremendous. It may have seemed chaotic at times, but you collectively as a workforce have done, as Army professionals, what you always do. You have taken the irritants and moved them to the side, focused on our mission, and delivered an absolute amazing productive year for us. So for me personally, thank you all very much. We're going to talk about a few things. Some of it may seem civilian eccentric as we go forward. You can bring up my next slide if you would please. And I'm going to try to line the pieces up so that it makes some kind of a thread that pulls through. But a number of events have happened this year. And why I say it's going to be civilian eccentric, there's a number of surveys that get conducted that you all participate along with a large portion of the Army. And the surveys provide indicators and signs, and we've done them a number of years. There's one that the President manages and watches through his presidential management initiatives, and that's the Federal Employee Viewpoint Survey. And we're going to talk about the specific components of that survey today that talk about employee engagement. And I'll go into a little bit of the background and why. But we're going to start with what I call alignment, and we're going to talk about what we do as a community, where we fit in, where's our function. I'm going to kind of give you the top level piece of that. And then in each of the organizations that you work, you should be able to recognize where your work contributes. And then as you go through your organization, you should be able to relate your very specific work to how we accomplish our organizational goals. And that's the alignment, and that's very important. It's also one of the indicators of an organization that's kind of unified and moving forward along the same lines. And so we're going to talk about that a little bit. But first, what I wanted to talk about was, and I stole this, of course, I didn't write this. I wrote the CAC portion in my words. But we stole this from, actually, General Perkins, his brief, when he talks about leadership and what we for. Many of you have worked with General Perkins and know he always gives you the following construct to work a problem set, and the first is, spend your time upfront defining the problem and the solutions will fall out. And then he always talks about as an organization, know first what you stand for, what you're doing before you go in and list out the how. So borrowing that and borrowing some of his briefing, a kind of for all of us, a capstone, the initial alignment, as Army professionals, it does not matter which cohort you exist in within that profession, be you civilian, NCO, enlisted officer, warrant officer, then as a part of the profession, we all collectively are involved in the Army defending the nation specifically to do that. Now, that comes straight out of ADP 600, our capstone set of manuals. They're about 10 pages. You are very easily found. You can download them to your iPhone, iPad, Android, whatever. In fact, that's one of the projects we worked on this year, one of our successes. Excuse me. And then the institutional part of that overall mission, our part, is to ensure that we send those soldiers into battle with the full might and weight of our entire country and everything possibly we can do behind them. And our specific portion of that, this is where I hope no English majors are grading me, this is kind of my interpretation highlighted in yellow. And within that, each and every one of us should be able to find what you have spent the last year and what we're going to do next year should relate to that in a macro sense down to the specifics portions. So our job is to ensure that the Army professionals have functional career and professional education the best possible. Think about the education. You're sitting in one piece of it right here in this campus where we do the educational system for the civilians and the intermediate level for the officers and their pre-command course. And this institution also has responsibility for warrant officer education system coming soon. They will fold in the NCO education system. Okay? So they'll have OES, WOES, they'll have CES, and I'm sure I missed one. We also have responsibility for training. Now, think about that, the alignment of training where the Centers of Excellence are operationally controlled, integrated, synchronized throughout this headquarters. They all are an element that General Brown has as part of his command to accomplish our mission. So from entry level through AIT, all the way up through the education, no matter which cohort, up through the very senior leader education form, that's professional military education appropriate to your career track and where you sit in your cohort. With that, we have responsibility for ensuring that meets the institutional mission. And again, I refer back to that. Training is a huge aspect of our responsibility. We actually perform the Army's Executive Agency for not only just the training that we talked about, the skills transferance, but for enabling the training both within the institutional side, okay, and the operational force. So if you think about home station training, you think about the training aids, you think about the land, the ranges, the targets, we collectively have responsibility for all that. It's an absolute huge mission. To include, I believe they own boats and even a couple hundred miles of railroad with four or five locomotives because we train locomotive engineers. I may be off on the exact numbers and amounts, but I mean, you'll find us pretty unique as you get to that mission set. And I believe they own about a million and a half acres or square miles, one of the two, huge chunk of the training ranges. So the Army's training ranges also are in our portfolio. So we have a very huge and diverse portfolio, which allows us to impact the institutional part, and that's our portion that we do. We also have the responsibility for doctrine, and doctrine is the foundational basis of the how of what we do in the Army, from squad all the way to the Army staff, theater armies, and in the Joint Task Force. We also have responsibility for writing, crafting, and teaching the Army profession and its ethics. A lot of those elements are found under the Mission Command Rubric, which is what I have put in here to talk about. We have the ethics, the values, the philosophies, and the control systems. You can think of the control systems as the systems that we use in the tactical, but we also heavily influence how the networks are tied together, how we enable command and control, which I know is not the right term, but control of the processes that enable mission command. We enable and engineer those throughout the nation and overseas. So when you think about the scope of what we do, and I've used very simple words up there, education, training, doctrine, leadership, both functional, career, and professional, that's a whole scope, and we own that for the Army. That really is Lieutenant General Brown and all of us responsibility, and that's our contribution to the Army. So the whole purpose of this discussion is, hopefully will come clear in about four charts. Oh, I can see you're all waiting with great anticipation for those charts to roll forward. Thank you. Let me talk of one other thing before we move on into some specifics. Mission Command. Mission Command is not just a philosophy for leading combat brigades. Mission Command is the leadership philosophy that the Army executes this mission by. That means each and every element in each and every cohort. And we particularly talk about this a lot in the civilian education system because it's very easy to go, well, that doesn't apply to us because it says mission command and all it talks about warfighting. That's not true. The principles of mission command apply to all of us as we manage this huge organization. And this is both our theory, philosophy, and practice. So when you think about it, the leader of an organization's philosophy derives that we need to build cohesive teams, create shared understanding, provide clear commander's intent, leader's intent, exercise discipline initiative, and use mission orders and accept prudent risks. That's kind of a 21st century philosophy that the corporate world wishes they could copy from us and implement. It's hard to say how many visitors we get here, anyone period during the week, and foreign armies visiting, and they always ask, how do we do what we do? And the answer should be, and it is, it is the mission command and the training invested in each and every one of our members. You think about over a period of a career, up to four years of a 26-year career, maybe in training. And I just had a couple of students of ours that are now serving training with industry, and I asked them the same question. How much is invested in training and education within a corporate construct? And they wrote back and said at the build the senior leader level, they get about four days, and the rest is all done on the job. So I find that interesting. But when you think about what makes our Army unique, it is the investment in the systems predominantly the CAC manages. So think about that again as the importance. So I just wanted to emphasize a point that mission command is our leadership philosophy. It may be awkward at sometimes figuring out mission command and not just associating it with operational units. It applies to us, it applies here, and we try to do it every day. The interesting part, at least to me, is the construct that we use and that we drive the processes that enable this, but we drive it through a very logical way. First, understand, visualize, describe. If you can describe it, you're well on your way to finding and understanding the problem you're working on or the challenge. Direct the implementation, lead through the implementation, and then assess how well you did it. So with that, did that make sense? So is there anyone that didn't understand the linkages here? Okay, no brave souls, very good. Thank you. So now I want to switch gears because we're going to come back to that alignment. Remember, that's alignment. We're going to come back to that, and if you could go to my next chart, please. So that alignment and that mission set works very, very well. The 39th Chief Staff of the Army, recently installed, General Milley, put out his initial message, and within his initial message, he put out readiness is the number one thing in the Army and will always be the number one. That is his number one and only number one. That's a rather unique comment in of itself. How many of you have multiple number one priorities you balance every day? Yeah, I would see about 150 hands go up because I know what you do for a living, and you're always balancing 100 priorities. But he says that is ours. Here is it, here it is, untrained, poorly led, okay, undermanned with less than the best equipment. Right there at the very front, the two things that we are responsible for in the Army is the number one priority of Chief Staff. So if that doesn't give you the sense of importance on what we do for a living collectively, I'd be hard pressed to figure out anything else. That is the boss, and that is what he says his number one priority is. That is our charter under making that mission set in the front. Okay, the first chart. Then we work on the future Army, and we invest a lot of time, not only on making today's work, but how to shape and go forward for the better in the next Army, in the next 20 years. And I'll kind of return back to that as I kind of recap some of our successes this year. So if you could go to the next chart, please. So I'm going back to the Federal Employee Survey, and I'm going to talk about something called the Employee Engagement Characteristics. There are three characteristics that are derived out of that survey the analyst put together, and there's a series of the questions in the survey that are looked at separately to derive scores against employee engagement. Okay? And why is employee engagement important? If you could go back one chart, please. I'm going to wear this person out up there. Two charts. Go back one more. What does it say we do? You build cohesive teams through mutual trust. Now, if you could go back to the chart that I was talking about. This survey provides an indication in the areas of performance management, career management, and professional development. And the linkage to that is set at a standard on that survey by the President and under the President's Management Initiative. So what am I going to talk about? How we're doing. And how we're doing is derived from the large body of the Army, so don't personalize this. We just need to learn from this. And the other part of it is, and the interesting part, our own surveys that we do in leadership, done by the Center of Army Leadership inside the Mission Command Center of Excellence, been doing those for a number of years, the correlation between our own surveys and what's found in the Federal Employee Survey is very high. In other words, that correlation means found the same thing. The other interesting aspect, at least to me, out of that, it is not specific to the civilian cohort. The same issues that are found in the civilian part of the Army Leadership Survey we conduct is found in the exact same levels in the uniformed attitudes. So a lot of what I'm talking about today will be civilian-specific but applicable to all because these are the engagement pieces that we're falling down on, and we've got downward trends. So how are we doing? Not so good. Strong correlation between those. I talked about the two surveys, but we've been watching this for a number of years. So last spring, the Undersecretary of the Army got a large number of the executive service members and locked us up in a, somewhere in the Pentagon, I can't remember the room, for about two and a half days to validate these findings and to take a look at it. An outcome from a number of those was conducted last week, and that was the Employee Engagement Conference. Representatives from each and every installation and Major ACOM and a number of members of the executive service went to work on each of those components to take a look at them. So this whole thing I'm doing is going to give you an advance notice that next year you're going to see changes in initiatives against these three performance indicators, these three indicators, to try to improve the Army as we do that. And it really boils down to next chart. This is where the President sets his score. He says 67% positive ratings in each one of these categories is his standard. Currently in the aggregate, the Army is at 64%. And we're going to build action plans from the Army down to the local up, dual-pronged attack, to try to drive some increases in that. Driving the number increases is not the overall point. Increasing the crucial conversations that make performance management, career management, and development positive and viable experiences to go all the way back to the first chart to build strong teams with trust. That's really the basics of it, not to drive a few percentage points up. Okay? Employment engagement is defined there, but I've kind of walked you through it enough, and these charts will be posted somewhere. You can pull them up and tear that apart if you want to take a look at it, as these reports are all posted also. So if you go to the next chart, performance management, there's some unique pieces on performance management. Thus, one of the things that I will tell you that's going to change next year is 200,000 civilian employees, United States Army, in the spring will convert to a new evaluation system called New Beginnings. This fall, we will start training the trainers and be having training sessions to get ready for a spring start. It will be a collaborative effort between the commands, okay, and CPAC. CPAC will train some, we'll train some, but the distillation of it will be a change. No, not returning to NSPS, if that was the first thought through your mind. It'll be a change to a three-tiered evaluation system. And I haven't even seen it. Now, I don't know anybody that's actually seen the draft charts or any of that because they kept it very close hold. But as I understand it, has anybody seen it? Anybody seen anything about New Beginnings? Had anybody heard of that before? Couple people? Okay. I'm telling you, they've kept it pretty close hold, but we do know it's coming in the spring, and it will replace the 7222. So on performance management, these are the key questions that, and I've edited them down to what engages on performance management. My performance appraisal is a fair reflection of my performance, and that meets the President's 67%, which would be right there, rating. So that's kind of a positive. How whatsoever, when you think about that, is it a valid, is it really something to do when 92% get rated at the very high level? So how many are going to go, no? Okay, that was my question. That's the analytic part. All right? The next question, 19, in most recent performance appraisal, I understood what I had to do be rated different performance levels than number 44 here. Discussions with my supervisor, team leader about my performance are worthwhile. And 44 is an area that we need to do some improvement on. 46, constructive suggestions. So supervisor, team leaders, and what I'm telling you is, this is the purpose, this is the actual questions that drove this discussion from the Undersecretary, whose direction came down from DOD and from the Office of OMB. So at the very senior levels of our government, the survey is very carefully looked at, and the opinions expressed in the survey localized for the Army, okay? And I do not have our local scores. I don't even know, I've never seemed to have been able to attain them from the Federal Employee Survey localized to our area because I just don't think they de-aggregate them down to that level. So in the last six months, supervisor and team leader has talked, so that one actually met it also. I'm not sure why 15 isn't green. That's my mistake. It should be a green also. But the ones in red are going to get some attention and focus and action plans. So remember the group that I talked about, okay? And we're going to focus on that, and when we finish this up, I'm going to give us some thoughts on what we can start to do right now. But I wanted to kind of see ourselves define the problem. And you can see that this has been a trend analysis, okay, for four to five years. So it's not just an anomaly or a blip. So let's switch over. Next chart, please. This is professional development. How many of you remember answering these questions that did the survey? Quite a few? Okay, good. I'm given an opportunity to improve my skills in the organization, talents are used, training needs are assessed, skill level in my work unit has improved, supervisors support employee development, and how satisfied are you with the training? Now, that's the exact questions. I don't think we've torn that down to what training means because training can mean a very wide applicability as each individual answers that question. But as you can see, they're running around in the lower 60s and down percentage, especially 27, okay, but 47 in there. So there's some work indicators that indicate we can improve in that area. Okay, so we've talked about two of the areas, performance management, professional development. Next chart, please. And the next one is career management. And some of these bleed into each other and can be double counted. But again, it talks about discussions with supervisor about my performance, and I find this interesting, that one does not equal that one. They've talked about it, but I guess it was not a worthwhile discussion, maybe one way of interpreting that. And opportunity to get a better job in your organization. I got to tell you, that one, I'm not sure I've argued against putting that in there because that is so personal, and the hiring situation is what it is. And so it also depends on your perspective. If you're upset because there's no opportunity to get promoted in what you would deem a fast fashion is, you know, I'll ask you the first question. Are you mobile? Are you mobile? Will you move? And rightfully so. Many, many times, the answer is, no, I don't want to, which is a perfectly acceptable answer. But yet, if you want to be promoted and move up in the chain in your career program, you have to move where the opportunities are presented. Or if you're going to remain in this area or remain in your area, which is again, a perfectly fine answer, you need to understand that the promotion opportunities will be less. And it just happens when people attrit, move, it's just not at the speed that the Army as an aggregate will do that. Did that make sense, that discussion? That's not a negative, it's not a positive, it's just a fact. Okay? Satisfied with training you receive for present job? So we're in there. So we're in there, and so we're going to talk about, if you go to the next chart, please. So I mentioned about the undersecretary of the Army and ASA MRA, that's the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Manpower Reserve Affairs. That's one of the five honorables appointed to that, politically appointed, Senate confirmed, that managed that. So it's currently an appointee named Ms. Wada, Ms. Deborah Wada, and we have engaged. In fact, she came out and spent the first day of this conference last week with us as we went through this. And we worked framework and action plans for the Army to start putting in place over the next year, okay? And so we, as a collective workforce, and it is applicable to all, can expect a renewed emphasis locally and Army-wide on conducting these crucial conversations that we're going to do. And so the how-to on this is supervisor, employee dialogue on objectives to continue to our organizational goals. And understand that at the very top level, the organizational goal started from chart one and flow down, okay? The employee dialogue on career programs maps. Have the discussion and then document it and take a look at the career program maps inside Army Career Tracker for each and every one of your career programs. There are a few that don't have them, but they're continuously working on them. Sir, welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, come join me, sir. Assess the developmental leads and then build an IDP in the Army Career Tracker. Now, I'm going to talk about this for a second, okay? That does not mean add every course at Harvard, Princeton, Yale, and this. What it means is a real dialogue to take a look at your skill set, both employees' assessment and supervisor, of where you're at in your skill set by your career program. And also take a look at the developmental needs for your professional military education. And that is a gap assessment, and then put that in the IDP, because if you put in an individual development plan, twenty-two hundred different courses, okay, guess what? You might as well have not done it. There's no way we can afford to do that. What you need to do is put in there the most cogent and direct need and for long-term development. So it's a very crucial conversation to have as you go through. Okay, and then on your performance, have a dialogue and write them in the SMART objectives, and make sure those objectives are tied to the organizational goals. That's the alignment, that's where we started this all off. So with that, I'm going to flip over to kind of what we've done in the last year, and then I'm going to talk about what I see next year in resources and manpower, because I know you'll have questions on it. So if you go to my next chart, please. Okay, accomplishments. Like I said, if you look at what CAC does in its entirety and that scope of responsibility, we put out strategies that General Brown will talk about and as are headed forward, but we set something in the human dimension, talent management, and something called Army University. And we drove change in the Army, which was what the Army Operating Concept asked us to do. It told us how we're going to have to look in the future, and this was our piece of the future, and we built strategies and are driving forward on that change, and we did very well, amazingly well. We also developed some new approaches to training, how to resource training, how to aggregate it and make it work at home station that are coming up, and they added in a bottom-up methodology for deriving requirements. In Mission Command, they reset the entire construct, in my opinion, of how they're going to approach the control part of Mission Command, the lower half of ADP six-oh logic chart, if you will. And I highly recommend you read it, you don't have to go home and read it tonight, but it is how we lead and it is how we manage. They established Human Dimension Task Force, conducted Army Professional Forums for the CSA for almost all the cohorts, both at the very senior level and at the junior levels, and pulled those together. Those results have been fed, they were fed into a number of documents to validate our way that we're moving forward in the future. Education, and conceptualized and built a business case to get approval to construct Army University, provisionally organized it in a new physical location, and converted to Single Start CGSC, increased the load in CES, and established the Sharp Academy. A pretty busy year. That's why I started out very far. Thank you for a great effort this year, it's been an amazing year. If you go to the next chart, please. Sir, I'm not speeding up, and I am, I'm going to finish on time.
Take your time.
So I wanted to cover a little bit about workforce. I'm sure there will be a number of questions, I'll try to answer upfront. The questions will concern resources and manpower. And what are we looking at, where are we at, what do we see? We are still at about the same mix, a twenty-six percent uniform, thirty-seven percent Department of the Army civilians, and thirty percent contracted support. We maintained a ninety to ninety percent, ninety-one percent fill rate against our authorizations, and we've done that for the last twenty-four months. About eighty-six percent fill rate on the military. Yes, we have had losses that will be effective on one October sixteen and called the FY-17 Table of Distribution Allowances. So yes, we have had some losses. If you look locally, it's about eighty-five, about fifty military and the rest civilians. We have prepared for that, we have documented those, we know those. The preponderance of them will be empty, and there's like three GS employees that I still have to resettle over the next twelve months into different jobs, and the rest will attrit. So no RIF plan, no RIF anticipated. Right now, no RIF needed. We have met our obligations on that. We have also had some gains. We have had increases, obviously from the Sharp Academy being stood up here, that added in military and civilians, increase in student loads in our SAMs, our School of Command Prep with a PCC, if you will, and in AMSC. We've also added in ATSC, TICOMobility. So in the end, well under a hundred losses against our about forty-five-hundred in strength. So not bad. We fared very well and were able to significantly provide some increases. Fiscal, we'll talk about that. I'll just start by saying what I think. We will, ninety percent probability, come the change over the fiscal years, have, be under a CR, meaning that we do not have an approved budget or appropriation. So we will start under a CR. The question we don't know is what will be the ceiling on the CR and the duration. Suspicion is that this year, the CR will be very long, will either be one very long one or multiple long ones put into place. There is a probability we could be under a CR for the entire fiscal year. What we are all watching with bated breath is the level. Will it be at the amount of money we were authorized to spend in FY-15 this year? Will it be the amount of money forecasted our needs in the President's budget? Or will it be what they call the BCA budget, the sequestration level? And if it's the sequestration level, that line is forty-one million dollars for us at CAC here, less than we had last year. So we don't know the answer to the levels, but I guarantee you, high probability that we'll be under a CR. And that's what we're waiting on, is which one of those three levels they will authorize it. Congress sets that, they set it at that level, and that's what we are allowed to execute to, okay? You might want to know a sequestration impact. So this year, the QDR took and brought us down to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's the in strength of the Army. Civilian Corps also went down, and we have accommodated all those in that piece as it comes down. But if we have to go to sequestration, then the Army active in strength will be four-twenty with reductions in the reserve components, the other compos, and there'll be another tranche of a civilian reduction that'll come down. But right now, in TRDOC, we're anticipating about five to six hundred more civilian reductions in fiscal year eighteen and nineteen. And the way we have managed the civilian authorizations, although it may be painful to you and to us as we try to output, the TRDOC authorizations are already, that are filled and where we're at are already below what we're anticipating in nineteen. We have a complete system that we manage that to avoid having to do forced reductions, okay? And let's see, sequestration money, I have no idea on whether they'll fix sequestration. We're in our last year, in FY-13, they put a two-year suspension, if you will, on implementing sequestration, and that will expire in about two weeks. And there's debate on doing a very similar thing for the next two years. If so, that will take the sequestration BCA line out of contention and will be working and operating with one of the two others. So to boil that all down, do we expect further cuts in the future? I suspect there will be as they adjust all of those variables, but I believe they will be within the manageable level. Don't take that as me saying it's an okay thing, it's not okay, not even one, but it is a manageable level that where we can equitably manage it and plan for it. And we have completed our work up through all of next year. Like I said, we have three GS employees and eleven Title X employees that over the next year we have to adjust and get into, you know, new fields, new jobs, and we've been very successful in working that. So I have two minutes left, I'm going to introduce our boss, our commander, and then when he's finished his presentation, I think, sir, if you've got time, we'll take some questions, okay? Sir, Lieutenant General Brown, commanding general.
Thanks, Kirby. Let me, yeah. Thanks very much. But I'll tell you, I'm so proud to be a part of this team. Let me start by thanking Kirby. I've maintained the whole time, he's the smart Brown of the Brown brothers, and I'll tell you, I get the fun job, I come up with these, you know, work with this tremendous group to come up with ideas that help the Army, and he's got to figure out how to make it work. And I've never seen one of our professional civilians who does it better and understands better, it's amazing. What a great place to be. We all, every now and then, I think we need to pause and kind of look at, this is a pretty neat place, and I agree with Kirby's up there, what an amazing job over the last year, but many, many years. You know, before you come here, people tell you what CAC does, and I've worked in TRDOC with CAC from a distance, but I never realized all that CAC and Leavenworth and this community, what it does and what it means to our Army. Now, if you really want to solidify that, I got to take a two-month vacation to Washington, DC this summer, lead the chief's transition team, and man, does it look good here. If you don't think it looks good here, we'll send you for a couple of months to the Pentagon, and I'll tell you what, you come back with a spring in your step, because I don't know what it is, but boy, you walk down the hall and I'd say, hey, how you doing, like we do here, and people look at me like I was crazy, you know, and they're not all that happy, it's kind of a tough time. I've been in the Pentagon a couple of times, I didn't necessarily enjoy it, but I think it's even more challenging now. You know, sometimes you get advice in the craziest places. I was coming back from speaking at the Maneuver Conference and the Institute of Defense Business, a bunch of one-star, two-stars, SES is pretty neat, and we were grabbing a sub before getting on the plane to come back, and Jimmy John's, okay, this is not an endorsement for Jimmy John's. But we were grabbing a sub, and on the wall was some pretty neat advice. It says, "Work like you don't need the money. Love like you've never been hurt, and dance like nobody's watching." And that's some pretty good, pretty good rules for life there as you look at it, particularly the dance one for me, thank God. If you ever, I'm like, anybody ever a Seinfeld fan, seen Elaine dancing, you know, and that's so, anyway. But you never know, I sent that to my daughters, and of course, they were making fun of their dad, but I am really proud to be part of this team. I could talk for hours about what we've accomplished over the last year, and I would just tell you in summary, and never give a general a mic and say he can talk, because, you know, sometimes we do talk for hours and talk too much. But I could just tell you that this is the best chance in my thirty-four years in the military for change for the better that I have seen. There are challenges, sequestration being the biggest one, and every congressional leader I talk to frequently, you know, unfortunately, I don't get real encouraging answers on it, I get, you know, they'll say, "General Brown, we know sequestration's wrong, but it's the extreme left, it's the extreme right, there's nothing I can do about it." And I will then tell them, I don't, you know, that doesn't help much, and because, you know, of course, we have to be more efficient, of course, we have to save and be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we have to come down. But where is that point where you come down, where all of a sudden you go from being the best in the world as an Army, as a military, to second place? Where's that line? That's what worries me, keeps me up at night. So I know folks are working it, I do think, I hope they come up with some type of solution, but that's one of the biggest challenges out there. And there are other challenges, anytime you change, there are challenges. I see those as incredible, the challenge is incredible opportunity. And, you know, the things that we're working on here are so important, will fundamentally change the Army for the better. I'm just awful proud to be working with you, to be doing this, and know that we'll remain the best Army in the world, even with the sequestration challenges because of what we're doing. So I thought, instead of talking Army University, human dimension, all these things, I can just tell you, the change is out there, it's happening, it's not just strategies and ideas, as Kirby said so well, it's, you know, it's X words, and let's get going, and let's make it happen. I just appreciate your hard work and the momentum. All the i's are not dotted, all the t's are not crossed, and that's change, you know, but the momentum that is there, it's going to keep us the best Army in the world. And I talked at the Maneuver Conference about people are our advantage, people are our advantage. And I started with George Washington and what he did at Valley Forge, and then I went on to Teddy Roosevelt and the Rough Riders, and probably the neatest example is Sergeant Cullen, an E-five, who was a young sergeant. Here, we planned D-Day invasion greater than any planning ever in history, and you know how it happens, the plan at first contact doesn't work real well, well, jeez, we planned this one a long time, and we even used Patton as a deception operation, you know, pretty amazing plan. But just like all plans, we couldn't think of everything, and there were these things called the hedgerows, you know, the boucage, the hectares for the French, they'd been there hundreds of years, would have been better if it was a wall that was just put up by the Germans or something. But there were the hedgerows that the Germans defended behind, and when we tried to go through them, it was like a wait-a-minute vine from hell, you know, trying to get through it, and the tanks would be exposed, and we were stuck. After all this planning, we were stuck. And all the best experts, and that's what's always going to happen, but E-five Sergeant Cullen, engineer, saw the hexagons left by the Germans on the beaches, cut the metal, welded it to the front of a tank in a V shape as a blade, and that cut through the hedgerows and led to the breakout, among many other things that were done, but E-five Sergeant Cullen. I got to study this, I studied innovation when I was at National War College, because I was taking a Striker Brigade, one of the first Striker Brigades afterwards, I had to do the test and evaluation of the new type, you know, modular brigade and the Striker Brigade. And it was fascinating, too, because everybody and their brother tried to take credit. And it was fascinating too, because everybody and their brother tried to take credit for that. Generals, colonels, you name it. But Eisenhower recognized E-five Sergeant Cullen. I went to the Center for Military History and actually saw the document where he recognized. And that's, that's our strength. Type of organization that the best idea from the bottom up to save the day, because we will never get the plan right. We will never have a crystal ball. But the right leaders can do anything, the right organizational climate, a learning climate can accomplish anything. And so I would tell you, we need your thoughts as we're in the middle of this change. We need your ideas. You may think, ah, everybody knows this. We're getting ideas left and right. I just got some, talking to Brigade Pre-Command Course that'll help us with Army University. Just constantly getting ideas and all this changing, that's fantastic. And if we keep working it, we will remain the best in the world. Because as I briefed at the Maneuver Course and just to the PCC, if you looked like, let's say, some of our potential, you know, foes, not an enemy, but let's say North Korea, they could never do, they are an enemy, but you know, if they attack south tonight, they could never do Mission Command. They could never empower their people. They'll never have a Sergeant Cullen. No way. China, an E-five in our Army, a sergeant, does what a colonel in the Chinese Army does and better. They can never empower the way we do. Now, we could lose that advantage though, from bureaucracy, from putting too much emphasis in material equipment and technology. We want the best technology, we want the best equipment, but it can only do so much. So we can never lose our advantage in people. All of you are our advantage in the institutional Army where we're doing everything from doctrine, the right training, education, leader development, you name it, on and on and on. And disciplinary barracks, doing an amazing job there with our professional military police and every other aspect here at Leavenworth. So people are our advantage. So I'm going to shut up, I could talk forever about all that. And I think we ought to take questions from you here, answer what you want to hear, not what I want to tell you. But that's, that's just my piece. Thanks. I'm proud to be part of the team, awful proud to have professionals like all of you on the team and folks like Kirby. So go ahead, fire up the questions. What do you got?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah. Did I hear somebody? I thought I heard somebody.
Sneaking up on me there, Kevin.
Sir, we've got paddles and people go out and do that.
We, we have also a live feed from the various outstations watching and on social media, which we will address throughout this portion. Again, it's via hashtag CAC Town Hall. There are paddle operators located throughout the auditorium with microphones. We ask that you raise your hand and a paddle operator will come to you. When your paddle number is called, please stand and ask your question. Sir, as moderator, I have the honor of asking the first question though. So regarding professional development or promotion and professional development for the civilians, are we looking at a more structured professional development gates which will lead to promotions for our DA civilians, similar to what we have with the active military?
I'll give it a shot.
You start and I can finish, or I can start and you finish?
So I, I think what you're going to see is coming in the future, and it's not written anywhere, but we're kind of crafting the strategy now. I think you're going to see, based on your choice, we're going to see a hybrid model. And so today, you will not see that. Today, you do not. There's a code that is called the Merit Principles. And the Merit Principles do not allow a lot of things. And that's the piece that has to be overcome to move anything at all near to what you see as a system, centralized selection, competed for promotions. But you just don't think you're going to see that. What you're going to see is a set of developmental opportunities to where you'll become part of a bench. And just like right now at the GS fifteen level, those that have applied, and by the way, signed a mobility agreement, if I have a fifteen, a couple of spots that are called enterprise GS fifteens, if they, if the employee from there moves, then I will not do an announcement. I will get a slate from the, the civilian senior leader management office. And I will call them, you know, when this employee moves. And so you'll see positions designated as in that manner. You'll see change in positions as you complete the, some of the senior leader development programs. And then you will see also as the bench builds, the scaled opportunities through there. Because the Merit Principles will not be changed by law. They were put in place exactly so to kill the nepotism and unfairness that used to be in the civilian personnel system. But what you will see is systems built to do that. Now, on career paths, what you will see is laid out, which we've never had before, kind of a life cycle career path. If you come in and start at GS seven or wherever and work up to the gates that what need to be there and the training and stuff that you need to do to go to those levels. But again, still tempered by the Merit Principles. Sir, that's about as close as I can get on that answer.
And I think I'll, I'll just talk some of the big efforts in, in the, that stem from Human Dimension. So we have a strategy for the first time in two-hundred-and-forty years as an Army. Why? You know, in the, this is one area in particular, I'm really glad, I think talent management for civilians and military, that the civilian world has passed us by while we were in two wars. I think the twentieth century, we had, we had an okay talent management system. And the difference is, you know, you had a lot more time and, you know, the, the problems that you would get in the past century, you know, months to solve as opposed to days. The type of system we had took too much time then, but it takes way too much time now. And when you look, one of the changes, we move into this complex world is, before, a bunch of things, green pages, for example, that the engineers developed to give more input, okay? It, it, you know, pretty good and maybe some additional improvements in talent management here and there. But a bunch of things today will not get us to the system we need. We need a comprehensive strategy to get to the capability we need. Those leaders, professional civilians and military that can help us as a cohesive team of Army professionals move forward and win in a complex world. So you've got to look at in talent management, you've got the sessions folk involved, you've got TRDOC involved, you've got G-one and the personnel folks, HRC involved, you have policies that are involved at DOTMA, for example, from, you know, laws and you have other policies in effect. So you have to take a comprehensive look at it. And I think it's one area, we've passed the civilian world, I'm talking about businesses and outside world by, in Mission Command and Empowerment. They're still trying to figure that out, the speed of trust and how we do things and how we empower folks. They passed us by in talent management. I think we need to step our talent management system into the 21st century. Good news is, again, as part of that strategy, it's, it's under the line of effort of institutional agility, adapting the institution to the changes. General Odierno as chief approved a talent management strategy, very comprehensive, look at it for civilian and military to move us forward, to get to that capability we need, not just a bunch of things, but how do we really truly fix it to get at the capability we need here in this complex world? General Milley has picked up on it and the implementation of it. There's a two-star that's being selected and an SES. And they'll run over this next year, looking across the board with all those key players I mentioned involved. So it's not just one group. So I think we'll see some significant movement forward in improving our talent management, which has been needed for quite some time for military and civilian. Now, again, the civilians even tougher because of what Kirby was just talking about, some of the restrictions. We have the restrictions military side, so a little easier to adjust them, there's some tougher ones. But the good news is, we kind of looked at it separately before. And again, we didn't have a strategy to get there, what, what's the capability we need? Now we have a strategy and we're moving out and I think we'll see some, some big adjustments. Now, what's interesting is all of this work that we did, Secretary Carson, when he was under Secretary of the Army, came here early on and saw this effort and really supported it. Talked at AUSA last year about talent management, particularly civilians, some major changes needed and military. And then when he got up to, you know, acting OSD, PNR at OSD, he sent the SECDEF a memo saying, you know, you guys were, you know, we're looking only at material and technology, but there's the people out there, you know? And the people are key. And, and our system is not going to get, maintain the best people. It's not, same things I just talked about, the challenges in talent management. As a result, the SECDEF said, okay, tackle it. And we've been working on Future of the Force initiatives going on at OSD. Now, I'm still trying to convince them, these have a bunch of ideas right now and it's not a strategy. And so what happens is you don't see the unintended consequences of some of the changes. You have to, again, comprehensively look at it. For example, one of the recommendations is increasing a maternity leave. Okay? It sounds reasonable. My oldest daughter's a captain, just had a baby. When she was a lieutenant and had a baby, my wife and I watched her, her daughter very early on, she had to deploy pretty quickly after having. So when I look at it first, I say, hey, this is a good policy. I think, you know, there should be increased maternity leave. But when you look at the unintended consequences, when they, they start to analyze it, for the Navy, it was an average of three-hundred-and-fifty sailors a month that would get this extended leave. For the Army was three-thousand-nine-hundred a month, which led to eighteen-thousand non-deployable increase. So that, when you're downsizing and you already have forty-thousand non-deployables and you increase eighteen-thousand, so there's, you know, there's got to be room to work. That, that doesn't work, they're unintended consequence. So there, there can be improvement, but maybe not as long and different. But you got to look at it as a strategy to get to a capability so you, you can see all those consequences. That's a very long answer, probably won't get any more questions. But we, I could talk about this for a long time because it is very popular, particularly among the younger officers. If we don't fix talent management, we'll lose some really great folks in the officer corps and civilians, our professional civilians as well. And we're already losing talent that wants to come in as civilian professionals. But it takes so darn long and the things, you know, that, that they did, they go other places. I've seen it over and over again, it takes so long. So we can talk more about that if you want, but that, that's my take on it.
Sir, we do have a question from one of the outstations. If we see future cuts, which DA civilians, staff sections do you foresee are being likely to be affected?
Yeah, that's a really tough one. First of all, even if I knew, I'd be crazy to say. You know? But nobody, nobody has a crystal ball. You know, what we would do, and I, I, you know, again, the sequestration, I think the, really, the most frustrated I've been in my thirty-four-year career was when I was commanding First Corps and we had sequestration, we did the furlough. It's the most frustrated I've been in the system. I had to talk to our professional civilian key teammates, you know, three-hundred-and-thirty-some-thousand and we can't do what we do without our team, we're a team. And that's how we treat folks. And it was the most embarrassed, upset I've been. And then we had ideas to fundraise and prioritize those families that needed it most, a single mother who's divorced, you know, and then the lawyers wouldn't let us do that. So I was really frustrated with that. I will tell you, I hope to God we don't see sequestration. But if we do, and again, I keep asking for help and I know our leadership is too, and you hear it over again, Sec Army just talked about in an article this morning, every day just about, it's there. Our leaders are fighting hard to avoid it. But if it comes about, we will do it the same as we did last time, learn from, not the furlough part, but learn from, we're going to have to really analyze, really look, figure out where we can tighten budgets. The last thing we want to do, as Kirby mentioned, was let folks go or have to do something like a furlough. We'll do everything possible to avoid that. But if we have to, we'll be as fair as humanly possible and, and look at and get everybody involved that we can, the leadership, and do the best we can. I mean, I think, I can understand why people would be worried because, like what happened last time, we had a furlough and none of us wanted it, you know? And I hope we don't have anything like that again. I think we learned some lessons from that. But Kirby, any comment on that addition?
I, I just offer you a little bit of what we've put in place that we learned from the last time. And so we have a board called the Civilian Personnel Board, I chair it. Each subordinate organization's deputy, civilian deputy is a member of this board. And we meet every month and go over hirings, what we can hire, what level we can hire. And every month, we kind of set a goal to anticipate in this so that it doesn't have to be a elimination of a function. And, and I'm pretty confident unless it is sequestration doubled or something, that from all we know, that what we learn every month, we will not have to do a bissection. Now, that does not mean that we aren't going to, as we look to the future, as we just finished this year, moving a hundred-and-six of our employees somewhat by unit around into a new organizational construct. That doesn't mean we, we're going to not have change and that we will move assets against needs. But I'm pretty confident, for what we know now, unless there's something really off the wall, that we can manage it with the processes we've had in place and the planning, that, that this team, that represents all of the civilian employees, I think we can get there without coming in and doing swacking of, of functions and targeting towards that.
We're really good at, as an institution, something that's just in our blood, the Army is, after action reviews and getting better, you know? I mean, it's, it's not out there everywhere and every service, we're really good at it. And so even if we, we do something that one time, we usually don't do it a second time, we learn. And I think it's also when you look, the institutional Army, everybody says it, and when you look at it, I mean, it's been cut to the bone as much, I mean, I would never say as much as you could possibly cut it, but, but pretty darn close. I don't know how you could cut it more. And everybody acknowledges that in every meeting I'm in, the Pentagon and other, they know, they go, oh, boy, we'll have real trouble if we cut the institution more, you can't cut them anymore. And again, we have folks doing two or three jobs and, you know, it's amazing, you know, working hard to get stuff done. So I don't think we can be cut much more.
Some major news organizations are talking about government shutdown as of the first of October. Could you address that possibility, please?
I've, yeah, I mean, I've been through this so many times, the government shutdown, and have recorded messages for the shutdown and, you know, preparation. I almost feel like they're crying wolf again, you know? And I can't help but have that feeling. But we always prepare for the worst. And I think, everybody tells me, that's going to, that's going to be taken care of, but you never know, I guess politics could come back in and it could get ugly. But everybody tells me, I, I think we're in pretty good shape, but people realize that is not productive. But we will be ready for anything, any additional.
You know, as we're getting ready for this meeting, Mr. Spitero and his team put together some interesting research to, to kind of get to that. There is no direct answer, will or will it not happen? Neither, no one in here can predict it. But out of the last thirty-eight years, we've only passed a budget and started a fiscal year with a budget four times. Thirty-four times, we've rolled into it under a CR or a CR emergency passed within the second day. And I think we've only actually really had to go into shutdown, we've gone to the brink, and I think about five or six times, is that some, somewhere in the ballpark? And so, yes, it is a probability. But I will just tell you my personal opinion that it may, we may do it, but we've always been recompensated, reinstituted pretty quick. And I think that would be the case if it got that far this time. I will tell you that I don't ever see them doing the furlough stuff as they did the last time. I mean, that just, if you haven't seen, we've had our court system clogged, I mean, forever. And, and, and that just had such a negative impact. And I don't think they'll ever, ever try to approach it in the manner they did the last time. So probability of coming, I think probability for a CR and without end budget entering the fiscal year is very high. I'd almost say ninety-five percent. I'd say less than fifty-fifty, which is an easy call, that we would actually have a shutdown. If we do, it'll be resolved very quickly. And I, I think that's the mood of Congress right now.
And in our favor, I don't know if it's a good or a bad thing, is just turn on the news, look back six months, who would predict some of the things happening? Who would predict some of the things happening? You know, unbelievable. And as you look at it, and you know, that, I, you know, I don't, I mean, that's a bad thing, I think, because we'd all rather have a safer world, but at the same time, holy smokes, that's gonna be a lot of pressure. You've gotta be kidding me, the folks that defend us, and you're going to go through this while ISIL's out there, while Russia's doing what they're doing, while North Korea's doing what they're doing, while, name it, just keep going on and on. It's just, it would, what's happening in Afghanistan, you know, I mean, it does not make sense. It doesn't mean I agree with Kirby, you know? Anything's possible. Boy, it doesn't seem likely. But we'll be ready, if it doesn't, do the best we can to common sense and learn from the last time.
Sir, we have another question from the outstations.
Let's give them a chance in here first.
Yes, sir.
Because, see, I think what's happened, some folks in here are typing questions, and they don't want to stand up. I don't blame them. I don't want to stand up and ask a question either. But let's give a few more minutes in here, and then we'll go to the...
Yes, sir.
Now, nobody's gonna ask a question in here.
There we go.
Oh, there we go. Good.
Panel number one.
Let me go back to the civilian survey for a moment, and the bullets that didn't meet the standard. Was there any effort made to have focus groups to get into the gearbox a little bit and find out why the folks responded the way they did?
The answer, the short answer is yes. A lot of effort, that the meeting they just had, the Employee Engagement Training Conference here is an example. But overall, you know, good news, again, is we have these surveys and the longevity. I never bought into, a lot of folks had, a lot of the negative was because of furlough. I'm sure a lot of it was, but it continues. And so I think it's getting after the leader development, and we're starting to see real progress. And folks that before would pay lip service to professional development and broadening and leadership development for civilians, and civilian education, the backlog in schools not sending folks, we're starting to see real progress in that. You know, when you look at like AMSC moving here, tremendous decision, fantastic ideas made a difference. And you look at, I gotta tell you, you know, I don't know, three, four years, let me see how long, yeah, three, four years ago when I was commanding Benning, I thought probably the biggest problem was civilian education system. I thought, man, oh, man. And the problems, therefore, that that impacts on the morale, and then the problems that impacts on the leadership. And I have seen incredible progress, and I went out to the operational force, came back, and I was amazed. Lot of it was this guy right here, Kirby, that made a lot of it happen. But it's a huge priority with the SEC Army, with Ms. Wada, the MRA, with all that leadership. And we're starting to see things happen. Now, again, it's not easy, but my take on it is, and there are specific, all the surveys we get, we look at, okay, who is working what, from what MRA's working what, G1 will work, and some of those issues, what we need to work to change policies, rules, regulations. And then for us, we really look at the leader development, and what we can change in that, and then the education, as well as a bunch of folks together. Kirby, any other?
Yeah, and in addition to that, and I think specifically, yeah, there are going to be, and there's our number of initiatives coming out of DOD that will do that. Now, whether we'll have one locally, or we'll have members locally as a part of a larger Army-focused group, I don't know the answer to that, but I know that was discussed to provide more granularity on where those pieces are coming from, and to try to look towards it. And the, and groups to work on the development of best practices and approaches as the action plans that I did mention. So short answer is yes.
I've had a few debates lately. Yesterday, I was speaking, and SESs that work in DLA and a lot of different services, and then one and two stars from all the services. And the debate was, you know, that article that was in Military Review about should civilians be a part of the profession? That's not even a debate. I mean, that's crazy. They have to be. If civilians are not part of the profession, we cannot, we will fail. We won't be the best Army in the world. I don't know about the other services, but the Army for certain, they have to be. It's not even a debate. Now, are there challenges? Yes. I mean, we haven't done as good a job, you know, in bringing folks in the right way, like we do a soldier, and, you know, the civilian programs, we kind of faded away from those. But I know you look now, we're getting back to, I mean, a GO or an SES, swearing in all new DA civilian professionals now, which, you know, used to kind of be delegated, not even done. Didn't even take the oath, didn't even do it in ceremonies and so forth. I mean, heck, on the new Army profession doctrine, there's Ellen Helmersen swearing in civilians. I mean, so the emphasis is shifting, and it's, we're including it where we paid lip service to it before, I believe. But we have a long ways to go. We need help, and we need your ideas as well. Other questions in here before we go out? Yeah?
Panel number one.
Continuation question from the survey, accepting the premise that if we want promotion opportunity, we have to accept the requirement for mobility, no argument. But why are we transferring that to education as well? In the senior levels, to get into a senior service college, if you will, you also have to sign a mobility agreement. So the logic seems kind of goofy. Somebody else needs my talent after I am trained, but you don't need my talent here where I want to stay after I'm trained. What do we do to get around that? Or are we just gonna live with it and say, well, we don't necessarily have a glass ceiling, but we certainly have a sticky floor?
I'll let, yeah, I'll let Kirby in, but I would just say, that's a great example, perfect example of where policies were changed to try to do the right thing, just things that they did without looking at the unintended consequences. They're trying to get people to move and get away from folks that stayed too long, but the unintended consequence, you have some quality people that want to stay where they're at, will then not do the education and not be developed. It doesn't make sense. That's why, that's part of the talent management strategy, to get to that capability. You have to look at that holistically and come up with a better solution. And that's what this Talent Management Board will do, with a two-star and an SES, and a team for the whole year, looking at just, that's a great example of where, if you just have things out there, there are consequences, don't make sense. Now, I'm not saying they're gonna get it perfect, but I'll bet they get a much better solution to that, because I understand why they did it, but I agree with you that it limits. So, Kirby?
So, yes. First of all, I agree with that. I might even borrow the sticky floor. I hadn't heard that. I like that. So I can tell you, one, that's known. Two, the reason for it right now is because all of the slots allocated for the War College are against either the Army or the DOD Senior Leader Development Programs, because there's only 25 slots. So there's not very many slots as they do that. So there's a two-pronged approach to that. One, an increase in slots amongst all of the DOD equivalent senior service colleges. And two, and why I would agree with you, is because my local policy for development could benefit by sending someone to the War College and returning here, even if I return it back to your particular job, it's a gain. It is a gain for us and talent and your team. The other thing that we tried to do, and the impetus behind it was exactly what you said, is that we're gonna start next summer with a pilot program of 15 to 20 civilians, 13s, coming here and attending ILE, and that is a return home. Come here and return home, which I think's a movement in the right direction, because that means that we can put someone in that educational venue, return home, use it for developing our local talent, not the Army enterprise level. Hopefully, that gave you some encouragement, that it's recognized, and we are moving forward with it. Forward for solutions.
A really good news story here is, you know, a year ago, before we had the Future Force effort, and essentially, we had to create a system within the bureaucratic system. It's a shame we had to do that, but you can't change that system rapidly. So you have to create a system within to get the change. You know, a year ago, I'd be sitting here, and I'd have to tell you, that's a great point, and it's gonna take years to change it, a long time, in that system, as it grinds through, and it's gonna, it's almost be impossible. And now we've really increased the rate of innovation the way we need. So now, I'd say, we can fix it, and we can turn it, you know, within a year or less, which is really good news, and for a lot of these issues, where we didn't have that before. Okay? We'll take that one online now. There's a pause, so they don't think we're ignoring them.
Yes, sir. Are there any lessons learned from the Employee Engagement Training Conference that you are planning to implement?
Absolutely. Short answer is absolutely. Actually, there's about three or four that will start. One of the most powerful is the Acculturation Program that finished its piloting this year. And there were a number of pilots, and we will implement it as applicable into this area and our other areas as it goes along, and that's something we'll work on for next year. And that's number one. CG mentioned pieces of that. We will change the swearing-in ceremony. We're gonna add in to, when you complete probation, your supervisor and you at the 10-month mark will actually come into the Civilian Personnel Board, and your supervisor's gonna have to come in and vet that you've completed your training, and that you're ready to go career conditional, and the board will convene, and you'll know right then and move forward. And we're gonna make it a big deal. So that, plus the new evaluation. Ms. Osborne, I see you're squirming there. Would you, would you want to add something to what I've added? You don't have a mic? They'll bring you a mic. But the answer is yes. And there were two or three other best practices that we will pick up from.
Interestingly, that acculturation program was so successful that other services were stealing it, and other departments within the government. I can't remember, I think it was USAID, and some others were, like, holy smokes, this is a great idea. Why didn't we, it's really, and lots of other folks.
Well, actually, the Future Force Program that you mentioned also.
Yeah, OSD. Yeah. No? Okay. Other questions out here? I see there's one online here.
Yes, sir. Are there any recent Army University updates that you're able to share?
No, I'm not saying any, but I suspect that, like my aide typed that in back there, because that's, you know, I'll have to, I'll have to let him go early, go home early today, you know, because that's, geez, again, we have unbelievable momentum in Army University. I thought we wouldn't get a person or a dime. And, you know, we're just gonna have to do it internally. Well, they found a lot of, 33 more civilian slots above and beyond the ones we already had asked for, our top course of action, trying to really get at, we had three course of actions, you know? One, we could barely do it, one, we could do it better, and one, we could do it really well. The really well one is being supported across the board. We are, people are knocking on the door left and right to partner from civilian universities. Two, three December, we'll have a seminar here, we will, some will VTC in, but I suspect we'll have at least 300 universities, maybe more, that want to partner from around. And what's great about that is, we can compete them against each other to help soldiers, you know? And right now, you know, there's just incredible efforts across the board from credentialing that Sergeant Major Klausser, you know, last summer, when we first looked at credentialing for soldiers, and I just talked to the future commanders about this, and they got it loud and clear and understood it. We first looked at credentialing, there were about 20 folks that came from all over the Army, 20 different organizations, and I went to speak to them, and they were sitting in a room, and many of them were sitting there like this. Kind of like, credentialing is in my lane, you know, I handle it for my organization. I got 3,000 people credentialed last year. What do you want to know about it? And that's kind of what the attitude was. I mean, it's very interesting. And very proud they got 3,000 soldiers credentialed. There are 980,000 soldiers, though, and there's much greater potentials. And we got all those people seeing, hey, wait a minute, we're all working for the same thing, and oh, by the way, it shouldn't be credential a soldier so that when they get out, they get a better job. We're professionals. We've been talking about, the profession is more important than ever. I use the analogy, if you were going to have a knee operation, as I've done like 12 times, you know, you don't want to sit there on the operating table, and the doctor says, you know, one of these days, I'm gonna get certified, you know? And that wouldn't be good. They're a professional. So soldiers should be certified for what they do every day, and oh, by the way, it helps them when they get out. That is a different mindset. That's not, I gotta help them when they're getting out, and Sergeant Brown's kind of like, yeah, yeah, I got other things to do. They should be a professional. They should be certified now and get credit for it. And there's some places, again, who have figured it out. The engineer school, their education leads to the certification. Most of our other schools, it does not. So little tweaks here and there, but that's just one example of so many, tons of ideas coming forward. And we're gonna see that the quality of education, the rigor, not meaning tougher, but quality education is gonna, and again, places like here at Command General Staff College, I don't think anybody does it better. But it's places like WLC, where it wasn't that great. And oh, by the way, Private Brown or Specialist Brown going through Specialist Promotable or Young E5 Brown, got no credits for going through that. Now, we can give a lieutenant, well, a cadet, not even a lieutenant, a cadet in commissioning at Princeton, two credits for a leadership course, but almost the same course, we can't give a Specialist Promotable credits? Doesn't make sense. So there's just incredible momentum, and folks knocking down the door to partner with us. And some of that is selfish, and that there are millions and millions, probably billions of dollars out there for veteran education and assistance. But a lot of it is not selfish. It's, they really want to help. And we'll be much better when we get out of this type of education, because anything we do in the future, we're not gonna do alone. Whether it's a disaster response, whether it's, North Korea attacks tonight, it's gonna be joint, that's a no-brainer, interorganizational, and multinational. So we better get these other perspectives in our education, and we better get this quality. And oh, by the way, this mindset, you could see it, I was talking to a group of Sergeant Majors, all really just tremendous leaders, and you can see as they realize, you know, kind of our philosophy was, we'll get a soldier close to being certified, a little bit of education, but we were afraid, if we got him too much, they'd leave. And he's 87%, don't stay 20 years already. How much worse can we do? 88%? I mean, and the opposite is gonna happen. They're gonna see, when you invest in them, they stay, because they know you care about them, you're investing in them, and probably the people are gonna benefit the most when you look at this. They're really getting involved now, the, is when we recruit, right now, most young men and women out there, they make a decision, come in the military, come in the Army for adventure, or go get an education. Quality education. Why not both? Come in for the adventure and get a quality education, and it makes you a better soldier. I think we'll see the, they'll stay more with this investment. So it's just been unbelievable. And I could go on, we appointed the Provost, General Kim, and he is a fantastic, I mean, if you had to go in and look, and it wasn't by accident, he came here, you know, a master's from a prestigious university, combat superstar, incredibly intelligent engineer, and just the type person, how do you fill General Hughes's shoes as he leaves? And I talked to him the other day, by the way, he's out there shamming in Hawaii, and says he misses Kansas. And I said, well, that, you know, I'm not sure I believed that, yeah. I think he was on a surfboard at the time, right? And, but anyway, so, and we've got, just, you know, to example, the Reserve and Guard, here's another idea, came from the Guard, and the Reserve one, we all developed together. You know, we have National Guard leaders and soldiers all over the country in academia, you know, I mean, certainly high school, but certainly college, major colleges and jobs. Talking to the Army Guard Commander, Lieutenant General Cadavie, Tim Cadavie, he didn't even know where they all were. And that's not slamming him, he just didn't know where they all were. They didn't have a list of where they are, what universities. They're getting that. The Reserve, General, Lieutenant General Tally had the Reserve, he used to be a professor at Notre Dame. So he was right on it, right away, when we first started, and he said, hey, we got guys all over the place in education. And we have a Brigadier General from Vanderbilt in the reserves coming to be the Vice Provost for Academic Affairs. What a smart idea. And he'll be here three years from the reserves. I mean, you know, that's just a tremendous connection, and they're all out there, and these, these things keep going. So we really have momentum. I'm not saying there's not challenges, there are. We, the good news is, we have, you know, Ike Skelton did a ton for professional military education. He was an amazing champion for PME, the library named after him, and one of his proteges, Representative... Representative Israel from New York, used to, he really was interested in that, and he kinda faded. We met with him again, we're having a, a meeting with Congress in the fall, that's a really important one, where they've asked us to come and say, what things do you need changed to increase, improve PME, and, you know, again, the Army University concept in this, improve the rigor, and we hit him up right away with things like faculty, making it easier for faculty to do exchanges, to go give briefings, to participate like faculty, perhaps some long-term faculty, like they have at West Point, you know, these type things. So, they are ready and willing to work with us, and Congress getting involved, and of course, so is OSD, and all the way on down the services, so tremendous potential, a lot of work to do, but more than we ever imagined, and it's, it's, it's gonna make a, I, I still maintain, no question, it's the greatest change in education for soldiers and civilians in our, in the Army since William Tecumseh Sherman put the School of Infantry and Cavalry up on the hill there by the clock tower in 1881. And that's not, I'm not, I'm telling you, that's true, we'll see it, it's gonna be unbelievable. So, thanks for the hard work in that area, and I know, again, there are many more ideas out there, and we need you coming forward with those other ideas, there are a bunch more, and I could go on, about 10 more that we just recently got, I'll shut up, I'm talking too much already. Okay.
Panel number five.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Go back to the talent management conversation you had about the schools and so forth for the senior GS civilians, the 15s. I worked in the private sector for a while, and one of the things we did when we got the ready to hire new managers was we looked internal first, and then we'd go external. And when you look at some of the announcements come out from the VA, it's mostly internal, from the IRS, mostly internal.
Yeah.
But when you look at a lot of announcements from the 14 level or at the 13, 14 level, it's mostly external than it is internal. So, it goes to talent management, do we not think we have the talent here to, to hire first, could we go internal first, and then external if you can't find the right talent? And so, that's just something that goes into talent management.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, I think one of the challenges with that is, we don't know enough about the talent we have, and, and there's a fear of big data out there, that big data's gonna be used, you know, for the wrong purposes, and really, we're starting to see, again, that's why I say in the civilian sector, they're using big data for, to advantage. I was sitting next to a Pricewaterhouse executive, and we were talking about assessing people and being able to look for talent, I need a strategist, and where can I find, I need somebody who's great with numbers and orson, I need a cyber expert, and the Pricewaterhouse executive pulled out his phone, he said, I do assessments monthly, and it's on an app, and those that work for him, they have the company values up there, and the folks that work for him, they provide where they are and their path, and it's not for evaluation, it's for what are their strengths, and what are their weaknesses, and how do they fix their weaknesses and build on their strengths. And he had it all right on an app, which is pretty darn cool. So, that's why I say, we've gotta step into the 21st century and use big data, know what the talent is, so we don't go out looking for something, we might have it right here, that's clearly one of the challenges. I don't know, Kirby, are there policies that prevent that?
Well, some, it's a judgment call, some of it's me, to be honest with you. And I, what I'll do is take that and discuss it in the Personnel Board, and we'll pull that along, because you have a representative from your subordinate organization that will be there, that can certainly advocate which way they would like to go based on their talent management assessment, and the board will listen to their recommendation, and then we'll look at it across the whole. Sometimes we go internal, sometimes we go external, but it's normally debated in that. And then, at the 14 and 15 level, I, I intervene directly on that at times, based on my assessment. That's the honest answer, probably not the one you wanted to hear, but each one is, at the grade levels you're talking about, each one is evaluated on which way we go.
Other questions? Okay, again, you know, thanks for what you're doing, and if you didn't get a chance to ask a question, or, I remember one time I was in a group when I first made general officer, and I asked for questions, and nobody asked a question, I went home, and, and I told my wife, I said, man, I'm so frustrated, like, nobody asked a question. And she said, okay, wait a minute now, did you ask a question when you were sitting there? I said, hell, no, I would never ask a question. It's all a matter of perspective, you know, but, so if you didn't get a chance, or, you know, no problem, send us an email, you know, and I'm not saying I'll jump on immediately, there was an article, I was quoted, saying I get 150 emails a day, you know, the overwhelming amounts of information, I was trying to use an example, but I'll look at it as soon as I can, that's for sure, and Kirby will as well, and, so if you have ideas, send them to us, and certainly, you know, we'll do the best we can to, to get back with an answer, and at least why something's happening, and then again, I think more important, much more important, are the ideas that are out there, there are a ton of them, and, and some of those can be, can be game-changing, like Sergeant Cullen, you know, in Normandy, and here's an E5, after all that planning, all those experts, and I have about 100 more examples I use with young leaders of, you know, if, if you don't feel like you can contribute and your voice can be heard, we've got a problem. And I don't see that here, I, I mean, I see all, I see tremendous ideas all the time, every time I walk them down the hallways and get out, I, nothing but great ideas, in fact, I think that's why my XO tries to keep me pinned to the headquarters, and I've gotta escape, because I come back with all these to-do and tasks and ideas, and it's more work for them, so they're trying to, so, but I like to get out and see stuff. So, thanks for all you're doing, and send, send the ideas, if you didn't get a question answered, we'll, we'll work on it, and again, really proud to serve with you, this is a really amazing place, and there are tough days, and there are challenges, but I am positive, those challenges, we can turn them into opportunities, we can get through the tough days together, and, and I just thank you again for what you're doing, because we, we do have a pretty amazing organization, pretty amazing military, pretty amazing Army, and you're all part of it, couldn't happen without you, that's for darn sure, so, thanks very much. [applause]